Wow, there we go. He's ready now. Leave on him. Um, and, oh, we should give it to the reporters too. All right, well, I'm ready. We have everybody. Wait for her to sit down. Because we don't need to gavel people who just came here for the first time. All right. We're calling this meeting to order. This is Morgantown City Council Regular Meeting. We're in Mon County Commissioned Chambers, 243 High Street. It's Tuesday, March 2nd, 2023. And it's 7:07 or something like that. And we're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she would please call the roll.
Yes. Joe Bugonam? Bill Poyeki?
Here.
Ixieve Vega?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trouble?
Here.
Dave Harshbacher?
Here.
Ryan Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Saleen?
Here. We're going to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from February 21st, 2023, Special Meeting Minutes. February 21st, 2023, Regular Meeting Minutes. February 28th, Special Meeting Minutes. February 28th, these are all 2023, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Approved by acclamation? Have it been?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have correspondence and we're going to just be switching the two items of correspondence. So we're going to start with Vaika Haas, who is here speaking about some, a pilot program in Suncrest. That's Suncrest Safe Routes to School. And we really appreciate her being here. And then along with her on the screen, Jamie Williams is here. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Is she, can, does she say hi? So can we, can we ask her if she can hear us? Jamie, can you hear us?
Oh, we've all been there.
Maybe she's on mute.
She's on mute.
Pardon?
She unmuted.
All right. Okay. So. All right, good. Hello. We're good then. Then Vaika, if you wanted to describe your project.
I'd have been too.
And we asked her here today because we saw these flags in the Suncrest neighborhood. And I happen to know that she had written a grant to put this together and that she had been working through our engineering department and so on. And I didn't know if other people in the neighborhood knew, so.
Well, I started it really slow. So I wanted to see what happened at a couple intersections before I tried to roll them out at like the eight or 10 I had planned between Suncrest Elementary in the neighborhood and Suncrest Middle in the neighborhood along best routes that were identified in collaboration with the pedestrian safety board. So it's, we've been talking about it for a while. It's kind of the, what happens with healthy streets after healthy streets is kind of the question. And there were some nice behavioral changes during healthy streets. But, you know, COVID sense of urgency dispelled. And then the question came, how do you, what can you do? And, and like many people in Morgantown, I am frustrated with the state routes restrictions. It's hard to implement pedestrian and bike infrastructure on state routes. And after hearing a few times about requests for crosswalks being denied, I thought, well, what can we do to demonstrate that people would change behavior if they had more cues that there might be pedestrians here? I think a lot of the issue is that drivers from out of state or renewed town don't realize that there aren't crosswalks. So you don't think about invisible crosswalks, even though that's the state law. Yield to pedestrian at crosswalk is a, is an intersection that's unmarked if there's no traffic signal or other things going on. That's still a yield situation. So after identifying the best routes to school and the kind of key intersections, I started mostly on Collins Ferry because I used to walk my kid to school on Collins Ferry and it was always a nightmare getting across. I think one day 64 cars passed us. And we're sitting, we're within a half mile of school, little kid, like waving at school buses and, and the cars just go by. So I put, I did some research and the flags help. They're not perfect. Nothing's perfect. But I'm, I'm trying them and they actually are working great. The yield rate before the flags went in was 1.6%. And I counted, I counted 50 drivers for did they yield or not yield. I observed additional, like how many cars went by you waiting. But it was, it was 1.6% drivers yielding. So that's a lot of not yielding behavior. And sometimes there's a gap in traffic and you make it over. I think the average was, you've got it in front of you. It, it was like 12 or 13 cars would pass you on average. And so with the flags, we're up to like a 30, I think it's 36.8% this week. I'm, I'm still collecting the after-flag data. I've got a, I'm going to do some observations at the school in the next week or so. But it's, it's up to like 36%. And so you're talking about being passed by one or two cars, not by 12 or 13 cars. It's a whole world of difference in terms of experience. When the first, the first flags rolled up, first couple started, cars stopped and it was such a surprise. Because you can stand there and look pitiful and wave your arms and dance around. And they'd be like, it's your problem, not my problem. I'm just driving. And now it's like leveling the field between rush hour and not rush hour. It used to be if you walked at the magic interval at 7:55 to 8:05, cars would behave pretty well because they weren't that late. But now it's like that all the time. And so it's really been a pleasurable change to see the difference. So it's going well. The, the bins have instructions on them. You know, if you weren't sure what's going on, it says, please wave a flag until a driver stops. You know, be cautious, other drivers might not see you. Return the flag to the bin across the street. Flags are for precautionary use only and do not guarantee your safety, all on the bin. So you know that that's what's going on. I like the little stencils of the flag in the pad because they show, even for drivers, like, oh, that might be a ped bike place. I'll keep an eye on that spot. And they're reflective at night. So it's going well. I'm ready to roll out a few more intersections. I think Rotary is one of the ones next on the list. Couple places don't have signposts I can attach things to. But overall, it's, it's been good. I've had some good responses from neighbors, especially with small kids, because it's fun to wave a flag and see a car stop. So it's going well. Questions?
We've pulled, pulled one out. On the way to church is the same route to school, but a little longer. And we've been pulling mountain walking. And I think people on Sunday also are in a hurry to get to where they need to be. And so I think it's a good reminder.
Yeah, it's, I think it's more, I don't think cars, I don't think drivers are being rude on purpose. I think they just didn't see people. You know, they just weren't on the lookout because there's no crosswalk. There's no look for people here. And then by marking those intersections where you should look for them, you see the orange even when there's no people. So then you start to keep an eye out at that. So my next steps are I'm making these little signs that say ped bike route, working with neighbors to get them as yard signs, you know, to, to kind of clarify that, you know, there's a sequence here leading you to school. Right now it's just a few intersections, like, does it work? But it, it works enough for me to feel comfortable rolling that out along the way to school. And then, you know, that hopefully gets people on a route that's comfortable. Because when I was walking, a lot of people would say, which way do you walk? I don't know the way to walk. It's so uncomfortable. Show me the best route. And so this is kind of doing it.
So you have a fan.
Thank you.
So we have Jamie Williams on. And she just came upon the flags and was trying to get across, I think, Collins Ferry specifically. And she's made a video that will show in a minute that she was showing to her friends in other places what the, what the flags were doing. So Jamie, do you have, do you want to say, say anything to Vaika this, today?
I don't know if she can hear us because we have to, ourselves muted to not echo.
Oh. So there's not a way to communicate to her?
Unless you temporarily turn your volume off, like you mute your computer volume and then unmute your microphone.
Is there a way that she can communicate with us? If we got a hold of her, like by text or something?
Can you put it in the chat?
I don't think the chat doesn't work.
It's great. The video she showed is, is at one of the first intersections where I roll them out. And it's got this funny little, little medium.
All right. What we're going to do is we're going to say hi to Jamie, who's also radio personality, so probably not really used to not being heard. And let's show her work. So she, she said that she was trying to tell, tell a friend how this worked. So she took a short video so she could. And if you had any extra handouts that you wanted to give to these two in the front.
I had 10.
There's some extra ones over there?
Help me stop sharing.
All were waiting on the video to come up. When you had presented this to Neighborhood Coordinating Council a few months ago, at that time you had a plan for some, like, scraping animals in different places. Is that something that's still?
Give them some so they have. I'm, I'm, I'm hesitating to do that. If I do it, I think I'm going to do it tiny and, and funny and in collaboration with landowners because that's for pedestrians, that's not for cars. And so I, I'm starting to feel like, especially when the new pavement went in, it's like, oh, don't touch it. And so I, I don't know if I'm going to do that part the way I had planned. I'm thinking about little tiles and, and marking the routes. But I don't know that parts are so important as what's happening is working. Idea was to get people engaged with walking on different routes. But I think that just being able to cross is engaging in of itself. And so I'm content with, with the results there. I was trying, I think about pavement stencils, marking different. This is a mile loop and it's here and this is that loop. I think that might be overkill for what we need. Because the whole point of this here is to demonstrate to the regional engineer that if you make changes, the drivers will change their behavior, right? Because this is why crosswalks get denied, because doesn't want to make a false sense of security in front of the school, the elementary school where traffic is under 2,000 or 2,000-ish vehicles per day. So if we can show that making changes works, I think we can advocate for more change. And so your second handout is like, what if, you know, what if we can make policy changes? You know, just a what if question at this point to think about. And that's, you know, beyond my pay grade, whether that's realistic. But it's something I've been thinking about, you know, policy, policy shifting so municipalities could make changes on certain routes. But let's see her cute video because it's demonstrative. I have a video from before. We can dig out some time too.
So this is Jamie Williams. She's showing, I think she's on Collins Ferry Road.
Two cars faster. Me too.
We do not recommend running.
It's old habits die hard. You had to, you had to run the whole time before. So nobody's passed her from the other side yet. I've seen, I've watched families walk into school and when, you know, when 30 cars pass you, it's so frustrating because you're just trying to get to school. So it's, you know, she got passed by, what, two cars total in that experience?
Yep. All right. So that's the whole video. Thank you. Did you make, did you make the flags?
I did make the flags and they take a long time to make, which I may not. Well, I, I didn't want anybody to say, oh, those flies are junky, let's get rid of them.
They do not look junky, they look substantial.
There's, I'm trying two different, two different kinds of fabric. This one fades, this one's fine. You know, I'm just trying to see what works. I think the reflective is important. There's a mesh kind I want to try that lets air pass through because it's mulberry.
Say to the microphones so the audience can hear. Yes, thank you.
I'm testing different fabrics for light fastness because one of those fabrics fades, but the other two seem good. And then there's a mesh fabric I want to try that lets wind through because some of the intersections catch quite a bit of wind. Mulberry and, and university, those fly out of the bins on stormy days. We've had some really windy days. So I need to switch those out for the mesh kind that some cities use. A lot of cities do this. Sometimes they do mesh, sometimes they do just plastic. So I'm kind of playing with materials. But I, I do like, at least for the first set, having the symbol for what is going on here, pezzing bikes, got it. And so it's not like construction, it's, you know, it's clear to drivers what's happening, even at a casual glance. But as people get familiar with them, I think, I think what I'm seeing, because the rates keep creeping up for how many drivers yield. So people see somebody stop, they're like, oh, I should stop. And so that, we've heard about that shift, right? Matt Cross talks about it all the time. Once people start to yield to pedestrians, more people yield to pedestrians. But when nobody does it, you don't want to be the car that makes everybody mad behind you. But you know, once there's a culture of, of, of we should yield here. So I'm starting to see that shift on Collins Ferry and it's super exciting because it's been a difficult corridor. And with the connector coming in, I feel like this is a timely operation. Because with the Collins Ferry connector pavement getting finished this spring, we're going to have hopefully a lot more peasant bikes on that route soon. So let's make it comfortable.
Vika, how's, excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Thank you. How's this been received by the neighbors? And have you had any difficulty? I, I noticed you, you say that there are neighbors that take possession or ownership for these. Can you explain that a little bit, too?
So like I'll be back into work and I'll notice I'm late for work, but there's flags that have been wind thrown. And then I'll come back and somebody else has already tucked them in, which is a nice feeling. Somebody took the trouble to put them back in the bins before I got to it. I did have one encounter with a neighbor which wasn't great. Asked, is this legal, what are you doing? And then the flags disappeared from that spot. And so where I don't have a city sign, I'm running into trouble because I, I don't have anything good to attach to if there's not two signs. And that, you know, Collins Ferry, there's some roads that tee into it. So I might need help with like getting a signpost in one spot where there's not a signpost, just because it's like, I don't have anything attached to without knocking on doors. Can we use your mailbox? You know, can I put a post in your yard? It's, it feels weird. But for the most part, so that, that's the same time that the one, only one bin is gone missing. A few flags disappear, but mostly they turn back up. I think what happens is because they're not where everybody wants them, they take them down to where they're going and then maybe return them a couple of days later. So I've put a lot of flags out. I think I put sixty-four flags out. I haven't counted how many you're left, right this second, but like when I thought they were gone, sometimes they show up again. And I'm, I'm not missing them eight at a time either. I put out eight at an intersection and one or two go missing, but then they show up down the street. So they're, they're migrating. And I put labels on the, on the pole to see what was happening at first, just out of curiosity, like. And, and also I was thinking, what if a kid comes home with twenty flags? What are you going to do as a parent? And so I haven't had to use that, but I did see some flags on somebody's roof where I think somebody, some, you know, somebody had fun lopping them up high. So there's, it's, it's not flawless, you know, by any means. It's a new system. But I've, I've really enjoyed, my next door neighbor, they have a little one and another one on the way. And they like to walk at night when the day's done. And they said, thank you so much, it makes such a difference walking to the park because now we can get across the street at night. You know, the kid loves it, we have a flashlight, we shine it on the reflection. You know, it's a whole different story for crossing. And it's just really fun to hear those stories. And some of the neighbors that weren't crazy about healthy streets don't seem to mind this because it's not, it's not impairing driver space, right? It doesn't change driver's space, it's asking drivers to change behavior. And that seems like it's more polite. There's some studies that show that drivers yield when pedestrians are more aggressive. And I don't want to have to ask kids to be aggressive in crossing Collins Ferry. But I think this serves the same function of like, we're waving, we, we need you to do something now. You know, same as me jumping, you know, not jumping, but stepping out when I'm ready to cross someplace. It, it serves that, please, please stop now.
How have you been able to communicate this to your neighbors as to what the program is and how the program is to be conducted or at least conceived?
I haven't particularly. I let the flags do their own thing because it's, it's gotten out on Suncrest Neighborhood Association a bit. I talked to Traffic Commission, I talked to Suncrest Neighborhood Association, the neighborhood associations at all. I don't have a social media presence. But I didn't want, I didn't want people looking out for them. Like I wanted to see what, what do the flags do, just as flags? I didn't want to, to prep it before and have people say, oh, I'm supposed to look for the flags and then yield. Like, let's just put them out and see what happens. So it's been small now. I think now that we have some numbers, would be the time to reach out to neighbors and say, look, this works. This works at this percent rate. Drivers are twenty-two times more likely to yield. We're doing this, you know, here's the routes, here's the thing, now's the time for that. But I didn't want to do it before because I was afraid it would change my results and how effective they were.
Would you feel comfortable with having our media, our?
Run with it.
The city's media distribute this information as to what your program is and where it's located?
Absolutely, that'd be great. Especially as I, as I roll it out. Because I tried just a few intersections just to see. Because if it wasn't going to work, I didn't want to, you know, like broadcast to the whole neighborhood that it was, wasn't going to work, but.
It's an interesting program. I'd like to see the results. I hope we can have some positive feedback.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's good. And like I said, we, we can't control everything. Can't control crosswalk markings on a state road at this time. But we can do this and it's not that expensive. A little time consuming, but there's other ways to make it less time consuming. And it's exciting to see that this positive change is happening after years and years of poking at the sleeping bear. How can we make it easier for kids to walk to school? Because, you know, not enough kids are comfortable walking, so let's change that. Okay? Thank you, everybody.
Yes.
Oh, more questions? Yeah.
Vika, this is really great, incredible work that you're doing. You put a lot of work into it, obviously. And I, I have heard from a lot of neighbors, I think Jenny as well, that, that they really love this. And then it's, you know, I think everybody was asking, where did these come from?
That's why, that's why Jamie Williams is honest, because she was asking, where did they come from?
They kind of like spontaneously appeared and we all appreciate it. I did, I was on Lawn View, I think it was like, I don't know, but we had a windstorm that night. And there was like five or six in the neighbor's yard. I did pick them up.
Thank you.
Put them in a, put them in the sand. So that was one of my questions, if you had some way.
I think I'm going to change to the mesh. Still changing the mesh fabric.
Yeah, because they were like, I mean.
Yeah, they, we had that really windy day. It was like very gusty and I, I wanted the flags to be big so they could be visible. But usually they're a little smaller. And so I think that maybe there's a magic number of twelve inches per wind throw that I didn't know about. But I think the mesh fabric is the answer. I have, I have budget enough to do another batch. And so this is again, a reason to do it as a pilot, like, oh, these, these fly, now we know. Let's do the non-flying type and, and keep them more centered.
Well, you've really thought this through and it, it's really great, so.
Thanks, it's fun, it's fun to see it work. Because I've, I've been in towns where they have them, you know, and, and it's, it's pretty self-explanatory when you get to an intersection, like, aha, this might work, you know, look at that. And so it's so satisfying to have that work without the crosswalk markings. Because I can't control that, but I can do this. And so if it works, you know, it's working so far, finish the rollout in Suncrest, you know, get some numbers. Does it change active commuting rates? That's still a question. Does it make it easier for groups to, you know, bike and ride to school? I know we quit biking to school because I got frustrated with lawn intersection. I just got tired of putting my kid through that. And I had biked him to school or walked to school for his whole elementary. And then middle school, it's like, I just can't. I'm done. For now, I'm done. And so this is, this may shift that. And so if that's true, that would be really great.
Thank you.
So Vika's a professor of landscape architecture and obviously has a lot of skills like making the flags and grant writing. So there was grant writing that went into this and really appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you.
Like, any, any pushback from the DOH on state roads using the program?
Well, I mean, technically I don't think that I'm in the right of way if I'm on a street sign. See, this is why I picked the city street signs to work with. Like, I'm on a stop sign before the state right of way, so I don't know that they get to say anything. I don't know if they know what I'm doing either. It, it's probably, it might be good to reach out to the regional engineer and say, hey, look, we're doing this. It's working, the yield rate is now this. It'd be fun to do traffic data and see if speeds have changed at all. Because I feel like they're driving slower, but I don't know that. I mean, they're, they're, they're being nicer. So if, if the more information we have to go to the regional engineer with, so there's two things that need to happen. One is like, look, changes can be effective, can we please do these crosswalks now? And then the other one is, you know, can we, can we develop a system where we can decide where we do crosswalks? Because this is, this is so slow. You know, it's taking years and years. Suncrest Elementary opened in 2017 and here we still are.
Yeah.
Trying to get a crosswalk at the school. And so I think the, the policy change, I think might work, might be Home Rule. Maybe another Home Rule amendment could be used to make the designee, the commissioner of highways, not the regional engineer, but our local engineers, because we have city engineers. And so rather than a regional who's in charge of, I think, three counties, you know, can it be a local engineering office that says, yes, this is a good place for a crosswalk? Yes, the traffic volume is under twelve thousand. You know, speed is under thirty, you know, that looks great, let's do it. So I think that there's potential here for demonstrating that our drivers are willing to behave differently. It's not a rural highway tri-county area typical situation.
It's my understanding that the DOH was looking into the idea of crosswalks. And we were working on that program. We had a person designated to that. There's been some delay. But I think that the mayor and I participate on a partnership meeting that we might bring this inquiry up again and introduce this particular program and see what the reception might be and advocate for it so that.
That'd be great.
Maybe we can smooth some of these things over.
MMPO, which connects with the DOH, would be great to help collect data because they do a lot of data collection.
Traffic counts and, and things.
They might help so you don't have to do all the counting.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Good work. All right. So now we're to item A. And this is a proclamation and if, is it Deanna? Dina. Dina Morrow, Director and Professor of School of Social Work. If you would like to come up right here. Do you want to read this and hand it over? You can just come right up to the podium here.
Okay.
So just sort of do something like this. "Social workers enter the profession because they have a strong desire to help empower individuals, families, communities, and help our nation overcome issues that prevent them from reaching their full potential. And whereas social workers have worked for more than a century to improve human well-being and enhance the basic needs of all people, they follow a code of ethics that call on them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity and worth of all people. And whereas social workers positively touch the lives of millions of Americans each day and in a variety of places, including schools, hospitals, the military, child welfare agencies, community centers, and in federal, state, and local government. And whereas the 2023 Social Work Month theme, 'Social Work Breaks Barriers', embodies how social workers help empower individuals, families, communities, and our society to overcome hurdles that prevent them from achieving better well-being. Whereas social workers are the largest group of mental health care providers in the United States, working daily to help thousands of Americans overcome mental, mental illnesses such as depression and anxiety. They are on the front lines of the nation's opioid addiction crisis, helping people get the treatment they need and prevail over substance use disorders. And whereas social workers have helped people cope with death and grief and helped communities recover from natural disasters that are increasingly fueled by our warming climate, including hurricanes, drought, and flooding. They have helped our nation live up to its values by advocating for equal rights for all, including people of color, people who are indigenous, people who are LGBTQIA2S+ or people who follow various faiths. And whereas the social work profession is one of the fastest growing careers in the United States with about seven hundred and eight thousand social workers today and more than sixty thousand more social workers expected to enter the profession over the next decade. And whereas social workers have continued to push for changes that have made our society a better place to live, including a livable wage, improved workplace safety, and social safety net programs that help ameliorate poverty, hunger, and homelessness. And whereas social workers endeavor people and our society to reach the goals they wish to attain, now therefore I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, and on behalf of City Council in recognition of numerous contributions made by American social workers, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as National Social Work Month and call upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers in Morgantown in celebration and support of the social work profession."
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There it is for you.
Okay, thank you.
And appreciate all your good work. And if you would like to have the microphone, it is there for your use. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. And members of the City Council, I'm delighted and honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of all of the social workers in Morgantown, Mon County, and West Virginia. There are about two thousand professional social workers in West Virginia. And we lead the way in providing mental health services, helping address substance misuse and addiction, providing child welfare, and trying to help strengthen communities and families. And we at West Virginia University in the School of Social Work have a strong commitment to trying to help support the workforce across the state and certainly here in our home of Morgantown. We offer a bachelor's degree in social work, a master's degree in social work, and we are the first university in West Virginia to now offer a brand-new PhD program in social work. So we're really excited about the kind of policy and research leadership that that can bring to, to our community and to the state. So we thank you for recognizing social work. It is a service profession. And in closing, as a member of the service profession, I thank all of you for your service to building a strong community here in Morgantown. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dina.
We have no public hearings and unfinished business. Did we have one board in commission?
Mayor, I'd like to now make mark down to the Cultural Arts Commission.
Perfect.
I remember.
Thank you, excellent. Thank you. By acclamation? Yeah, okay. And now we are to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And that would mean that you would come up to the podium and you would state your name and your address. And there are little lights that'll indicate when you are running out of time. So we're going to open the public portion.
Good evening, Council. My name is James Giuliani. I live at 256 Prairie Avenue, that would be First Ward. And I am the candidate for councilman in the First Ward. Plan to be working with you folks for the next four years. And that being said, a couple of different remarks. Tonight's Social Work Month, very, very important. And it hits on a topic that is really very important to the City of Morgantown, West Virginia University, and our total community, is mental health, addiction, homelessness. And talking about that, we're talking about shelters and all the capacities of it. And we've worked really hard over the last three, four, well, we've worked hard for a number of years. I can go back and when we started this with Reverend John Sonnaday and certain programs. And I have to point to what we have online with our city right now is that we have a site that talks about homelessness and addiction things, which is pretty outdated. When it happened, Paul Bragg was the city manager at that time and. So let me just read something for you if I can. I wish we had a photo here that we could put something up here, project, that we could see something. Because I have certain things, the images would be nice. So hopefully maybe in the future, I don't know here we can or not. But we have a homeless and addiction strategy and there's different things that we can go to. And it points out different things, like we have a picture here where all the social agencies are, the highest crime rates and things like that. Well, actually what it is, it's a pretty nice promotion for telling people what kind of services we have here and all the things that we have to offer. That's all good and everything, but it is outdated. And the coalition that we were working with at that time is now defunct. And now we're working, I guess, with the homeless coalition. But this came from Paul Bragg and this was the recommendation at that time. this came from Paul Bragg, and uh, this was the recommendation at that time. You might want to start your clock. Thank you. That's okay. I appreciate it. That's why I didn't get in a hurry. I was trying to get my things together here. Because it's really, really important, uh-
I've been timing.
The situation we have uh, with the homelessness situation that we have, the shelters, the warming shelters. We're really working hard, but what we're not doing, we're not working and coordinating and facilitating as a team. And what I think that this is gonna, what I'm gonna read to you is appropriate. It says, "The problems identified by the downtown business owners and stakeholders identify the symptoms of a much larger and complex problem that exists in Morgantown. As stated in the four pillars, that is an us problem, not a you problem. This is the beginning phase of a call for collective action to make a meaningful impact. This has been attempted before, but what is presented is a refreshed approach. Solutions of simply addressing homelessness, mental health, drug addiction, or alcohol abuse do not work in silos and should be viewed as part of an overall collaborative action. A sub- moving forward will depend on the proposed tax force that will consist of key leaders from the university, the hospitals, the business leaders, the nonprofit agencies, the social service providers, the community, and the elected leaders and faith-based organizations. This should not be an exclusive group, and it should include all those who will contribute to the collaborative action. A separate recommendation of a consultant facilitator, a director, will be presented for the city council's consideration. Continuing this thought of the fresh approach and the new perspective, our selected consultant facilitator coordinator can assist the city, and more importantly, the community, with a results-driven public-private partnership. Morgantown has the capacity of organization and the institutions to tackle the complex issues, and the collaborative action approach will increase the likelihood of achieving desired results and impact." And this came from Paul Bragg, but it's appropriate as it was in 2019, 20, as it is in now 2023. And more dramatic and more, more pressing. I don't know what's happened in these periods of time, and we've worked hard in certain ways, but we're not doing what needs to be done here. It's just not happening, okay? So what we need to do, we need to get the professionals in here. Our volunteers are working hard. There's people that, I'm not downplaying anybody that's professional that's been working at, they've been doing Health Right, Bartlett House. That's, I'm not discounting any of that. Please, let's not do that. What I'm saying is that we can be better by bringing all the resources we have. The social work program at West Virginia University, Mon Health, Van Dalia Health, through those organizations, through WVU Medicine. We need to get these folks together. Because we've gotten certain people in the room, but we haven't gotten all the people in the room. So what I'm saying is, let's look at this as we're professionals. Let's attack this a problem as what it really is, okay? It can't be cha- this can't be chased by volunteers or people doing this and that everywhere. It has to be collective effort. And we can do it because we do have the magnificent resources, as was spoken to, as we were giving out the honors tonight for social work. Um, there were other things I wanted to address, but I think this pretty much is the most important thing. Because our downtown is important. Our relationship with West Virginia University and the community in the county are all important. And um, we just need to work hard together to get us there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Marley Uniques. I'm candidate for the Fifth Ward of Morgantown City Council. And I want to say thank you to everyone who helped make the warming shelter possible this year. Um, it really was a collaborative effort between nonprofits and individuals and grassroots organizations. Now that it's almost March 15th, which is the closing of the warming shelter, um, it's entirely appropriate to say, what, what are we going to do going forward to make sure there is affordable housing in our community? Habitat for Humanity held their Raise the Roof fundraiser this weekend, and it was a big success. I'm glad to see everyone showing up to, to uh, show support for that as well. Um, and that's clearly not the whole solution, but another example of community collaboration with a wonderful nonprofit. It's very disheartening to see um, a crisis of housing, a crisis of food and shelter stability, um, being pointed at the people who need help. We have shown so many um, wonderful opportunities to help the community, and we just need to make sure that that keeps rolling going forward. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Uh, we do not have any, uh, we're gonna close this public portion. And now we're on to special committee reports. There are not any, and now we're on to the consent agenda. So um, the consent agenda involves um, quite a few items. And so um, if there's any that someone from council would like to pull out to be considered separately, um, please mention that, because otherwise, we are going to read through them all and offer an up or down. So um, a lot of these matters are um, authorizing requests for congressionally-directed spending. Yes?
I'd like to pull item D from the consent agenda to discuss separately.
Okay. I had an arrow on that one, thinking that might be one of the ones. We'll see if anybody hits the other arrow. All right. Um, are there any others? Just give you all a minute to skim down them that we would like to pull out for any reason?
I mean, I'm sitting beside you and I see your arrow. So, there, if you're looking for someone, um-
I'm, I'm fine either way.
Item J also discusses crime prevention. So, I think it would be appropriate to discuss the two of those together if we're going to discuss one.
Okay. There we go. Thank you for making my dream come true. All right. So we have pulled two items from the consent agenda. And so to start with, we're going to just go through the remaining items. And I'm just not going to um, read item D or um, oh, I guess, J? J? Phew. All right. Then I'm gonna read item J separately after we go through the first set of items. So, the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending section uh, six, uh, 365.12 of the City Code describing gate and pole ticket violations in parking facilities. Maybe we should be pulling that one, because we got Dana here. Um, item B, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 105.09, providing for election rooms and booths. Um, we have item C, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending the membership requirements for the Urban Landscape Commission. We're gonna drop down to item E, consideration of approval of a, of a resolution authorizing requests for congressionally-directed spending for Morgantown Employee and Family Health Clinic. Item F, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing requests for congressionally-directed spending for Morgantown Housing Create, Creation and Blight Removal. Item G, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing requests for congressionally-directed spending for Morgantown Metropolitan Theater. Item H, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing requests for congressionally-directed spending for Morgantown Municipal Airport, Airport Runway Extension. Um, item I, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing requests for congressionally-directed spending for Morgantown River Trash Removal Initiative. Uh, so that is the consent agenda. Um, before we vote on it, is there any other items that anyone would like to see um, pulled out at this time for separate consideration?
Move to approve the consent agendas presented, or as amended?
Thank you. Second. All right. Clerk, if you would please call the roll. Bill Kowecki?
Yes.
Ixie Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're gonna look um, to two items separately. Um, the first item would be item D, consideration of approval of resolution authorizing requests for congressionally-directed spending for downtown Morgantown crime prevention. And I think we'll just take the, even though there might be kind of connected, I think we'll just take the um, I think we'll take the item J separately. So um, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This uh, these authorizations give authorization to the administration, to our grant writer, to apply for funds from uh, congressionally-directed spending from Senator Capitals and Senator Manchin's offices. This particular item is gonna, is meant to address the, the reduction or prevention of crime, particularly in our downtown area. Um, we are seeking an, an approximately $200,000 from the two senators' offices for the installation of surveillance cameras and other incidental uh, equipment that might help prevent and um, uh, future crime in the downtown areas. Um, this also authorizes the city manager to execute all applications and requests and other reports that are required through the congressionally-directed spending. So that's, that's the overall view of this particular item. But it's in the amount of $200,000, which certainly supplements uh, some of the programs that we're currently providing anyway. Uh, we have some, a tremendous uh, video camera uh, program in place now. And when it's completed, when we can get all the hardware in, we'll complete that project and we'll have, the downtown will be well surveyed.
Wonderful. Does anyone have any questions, the city manager?
So, uh, yeah. Uh, so, the reason why I, I question this particular one is um, I'm not, I'm not, I guess, a huge fan of surveilling um, our citizens in the city. Um, I also feel like that we could use a grant of this nature to better, better ser- better serve uh, maybe our, our crime situation downtown. Um, I know that we had, you know, I had discussed on different occasions um, a program like um, a Kahoots program that's, it, used in Eugene, Oregon. I think uh, Councilman Kowecki had also talked about um, a homeless outreach team. Um, and, you know, this kind of, this level of funding um, would be pretty similar to pretty much what we would probably need to have startup funds for some kind of program like that um, to uh, bring social workers or um, teams of that nature into uh, our downtown, um, to respond to mental health crisis or substance use disorder crises. Um, and I felt like that would just be a much better use of funds than surveillance cameras. Um, and, and especially with us not having um, like a downtown beat at this time, I just don't know how effective, you know, this surveillance cameras would be um, in their stated purpose for this. And so that's why I would not, um, I would, I would try, I guess I would prefer that we look for um, more proactive ways of applying for grants. And I, you know, I'm sure that there's some other kind of grants out there that would kind of facilitate those funds. So, go ahead.
Yes, please.
Great points, uh, Councilor Butcher. I just wanted to um, add on to what uh, the city managers uh, mentioned. Um, I don't know if uh, last year, people remember, there's a big string of graffiti and there was horn or cork uh, pretty much everywhere. Um, but there's certain types of uh, those uh, types of crime that having those cameras uh, provides an access, uh, or even burning. There was a, a, a video, we often are currently relying on a lot of private um, business owners' video cameras to address certain um, crimes that are occurring. Uh, and uh, so whether that be fires or vandalism or spray paint. So, um, there are a lot of different things that they can be used for, but uh, just wanted to kind of point out either burning or vandalism of graffiti is a couple of those instances where sometimes it is the same people that are doing these in multiple locations. And and it can be difficult to um, identify those without uh, sometimes those surveillance cameras. Um, but just how we've uh, with the network we have and then uh, just have been using uh, or working with the local business owners for cameras that they may have personally invested in to be able to do that. So I just wanted to kind of provide a little bit of background um, as far as what that is. But however, council decides to move on that, I just wanted to provide that little bit of information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think it's important to note, this is, this program is not meant to focus on or to focus on a certain group or population. We really do have some issues in the downtown area that are unrelated to groups. Uh, but individuals, and a lot of them are, are visitors to our, to our downtown area. For instance, we had a discussion yesterday morning with uh, with uh, our Urban Landscape Director, who, one of her responsibilities is to plant and maintain the, the planters that were created by the pedlets. Well, I found out that uh, we have situations where the, the flowers that she's planting and other things are being torn up and taken. And it's just, I, I, I just think that whether they are, whether they are actually utilized to try to designate people who might be, be breaking the law or causing those kinds of problems, I think it's a deterrent. And, and it's something we certainly haven't had in the downtown. If you look across just, just the state of West Virginia, many of our cities have, have cameras. Even smaller cities have cameras, just as a deterrent for people to, if, if, just the idea that someone may be watching you, just kind of gives that extra edge that, otherwise, we can't, we can't maintain the level of quality that we're trying to achieve in the downtown. That, that's really the purpose here.
Mayor?
Yes?
Follow-up. If, um, if you were to guess, if, if, looking at the downtown, heart of downtown area, like what, how this would help fill the gaps in terms of what we aren't able to surveillance currently?
Well, up, up till now, I, Chief can, can address any. My understanding is, we have very, very few before. One of the key components of the ARPA program was to fund a good number of cameras. This is to supplement that program and be able to expand it to du- to areas that would not otherwise be able to be expanded. And so, uh, the, the cameras, I was talking in Chief Powell the other day about the use of, we have, we have a number of cameras that we've been able to install to date because uh, we've been able to make, we have the so- hardware for it to work. But uh, whether it's been utilized or not, and how effective it's been, and it certainly is, is a great tool. It, uh, many of the issues that we face in the downtown, action can't be taken unless some, unless there's evidence. And this, this creates that stream of evidence that allows us to be able to deal with individuals that are just vandalizing the downtown, whether it's graffiti or whether it's destroying our planters.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I, I have to confess that um, I, I'm in total agreement with, with Council Butchers, who are advocating for in terms of an alternate way of dealing with some of our downtown circumstances. However, I can also see that what we have here is um, an opportunity to fill in a gap that we've already started, uh, that would give us a better overview of the difficulties that we may have in this particular location. And we know from past experience that there are monies that are more readily available for- for, unfortunately, the hardware as opposed to the manpower that we'd, and, and programs that we'd like to implement. I advocate pursuing this and going on with this, certainly to fill this gap, but I would hope that we would not neglect the, the attitude that we might go ahead and pursue some of these alternate programs that we might find advantageous to our community and probably more difficult to implement in terms of funding. But I think by all means that it should be, remain a priority and a much higher priority, perhaps, than we've been able to advocate in the past. So, the bottom line, I guess, is for this, I would suggest that we move forward. Unfortunately, the timeline is, is fast approaching and I don't know that we can go about switching these things around. So we should take advantage of the bird that we have in hand, but let's not neglect that this is not the ideal solution that we're looking for.
Thank you. Yes.
Everyone's kind of breezing over some of the questions that I had, so I'd like to get a little, maybe a little more into. We do have a program currently, and I talk a lot about safety downtown. I hear from a lot of the business owners and also people who frequent the businesses downtown. And I am all for, you know, better lighting, the foot patrol, some form of cameras, because I think it's ridiculous that the same businesses that are asking for our help are the ones that have to provide their own personal security footage when, you know, there's a stabbing in front of their business at 8:00 PM on a Tuesday, Thursday. But when it comes to this specifically, I guess, we don't even have our own system in place yet, which as they've hinted at, we do have something through ARPA that we have purchased, we're trying to get installed. We haven't had an opportunity to see how effective that is or if it's, you know, the extent to which that is going to assist with any of our issues. And it's my understanding from having, I have a very good relationship with the West Virginia Municipal League's lobbyist that, that advocates for us in Washington DC. And I spoke with him at length at the last Municipal League meeting just less than a month ago. And it was my understanding that these congressionally directed spending earmarks essentially are very competitive. And we were told that each city should have maybe three or four. So I was kind of surprised to see that we were putting in so many. And you and I are going to be tasked in two weeks from now, going to DC to lobby for many of these. I think if we have several that we are trying to put out as crime prevention, my preference would be to really advocate for the trail lighting and those kinds of projects that really focus our efforts on what we need the most. And without our own camera system in place and seeing the effectiveness of that, I am much more comfortable going to Washington DC and looking at Senator Manchin or Senator Capito and saying, "We need our rail trail light. This is a long and ongoing issue. We're having trouble getting grants. We're, you know, we've put this in many times. This is the time and this is what we really need from you." And when you're, when you're applying to all of these different organizations or the different kind of categories that earmarks can fit into, I would much prefer to advocate for one instead of multiple, because I think that the rail trail lighting needs to be our priority project.
Was there anyone else who's wishing to speak on this?
I, I can't speak to how many we should apply for.
Yeah.
They both seem important to me.
Yeah.
I will defer to your judgment in terms of advocating and lobbying for what we need if it's too many, but I would certainly support both.
I would prefer the rail trail lighting over the cameras, priority wise.
I honestly don't know that throwing one away is going to give any more strength to the other. I do know that there are, as I had suggested in, in my first statement, that there are more sympathy to the idea of certain spending for certain funding of certain items than others. I don't know what the, what our senators are going to be more in favor of, but I can't see us throwing one away without somehow indicating, "Oh, we don't want this. We think, unless you're not going to give us that," is going to help us in the least.
I think, yes. I think, I think there was, I think there was a strategy involved in how this was, was written and chosen. So if you have more information on that, I would love to hear it.
Council, just for general awareness, we have that with representatives for both Capito and Manchin's office and reviewed a number of projects, some projects that they did not feel would be probably the best fit under some of them. And so some of them that we have had on an original potential list that were removed from this, we were basing some of this off of how the projects were funded last year. And one of the things where you'll see kind of each of the, well, if you review any of the handouts from Capito and Manchin's office, how the congressionally directed spending, it's a percentage of each of the different buckets at the state level. And so that they are kind of encouraged trying to go after monies in different buckets because, you know, while perhaps the bucket that fell under transportation and infrastructure and HUD maybe had a whole lot of applications, perhaps the one under, you know, environmental, an environmental one maybe didn't have any applications or very few. So those, you know, applications didn't have to be, I don't want to say didn't have to be as competitive in a bad way, but that was one of the strategies of trying to seek additional funding. So we have met with both of the senators' offices now, obviously. It's still up to their discretion of what to fund or not fund or pass along. But these have at least gone over from initial review with them, talking about which bucket of funds to go under and what the limitations or any matches and things like that are. Because some of them are just, we don't qualify for, whether it's the type of agency we are or the population of our community is. So there's just kind of stipulations with each one. And just so that there is a lot of that background that goes into that, general awareness.
I guess to be fair, I was a little confused. And it's on me that I was busy today and I didn't call the office after I read through all of these things. But they don't, there are different pots of money and I would have kind of expected to see, you know, we're applying to this agency for this, because infrastructure things do tend to be hard to get. Those are the kinds of projects that everyone's going after right now. And some other, you know, federal agencies that have earmark money are, are much easier to, to apply for and to be awarded. But the information that I have from our lobbyist that will be taking us around DC says, "Confirm about five priority projects. Pick your top three and you better have one you want to talk about." I don't want to talk about cameras in the downtown.
So, I would be voting to include them all, because we did this, our city staff worked with, one of the first things it says about this federally directed spending is that it's wise to have spoken with your representatives, representatives. And, and so because our staff has done this and because we are wanting a, a network of cameras in the downtown, I would leave that in there. That may not be the one that we highlight, because it's not our top, top priority. But I think from my point of view, knowing that this was vetted in this way, I would choose our top for when we're, when we're advocating. But I would put them all in, because some of them fit in different buckets that would be potentially have some space for our funding. So I would leave it in there. But that is an individual choice.
We don't have any data from the system that we're currently working on. I would be much more comfortable, you know, whether this is next year or the year after, being able to go and say, you know, "We spent this much money on this many and we solved this many violent crimes." Or, you know, "We, we don't know how effective they are, because we haven't put them in yet. We're still relying on Coolridge and Hoot and How to give us videos of a stabbing." So.
Right. Which has been a collaborative, I mean, it was making do with what we had. But now that we're working, many, many cities have a network of cameras, I would just leave it in there. Seems as though the downtown, there's some urgency and that it would be good to have those funds take some while, take some time in the pipeline to become available. So I would leave it in there. But that's, I'm one vote. So, so we will, unless somebody else, yeah.
I, I would just add that because we're relying on private businesses, cameras demonstrates that we do have a need to have better surveillance in our downtown area. So I think that is some data to, to express.
So, we'll vote up and down on this. And it sounds like we have a lot of support for the rail trail lighting, which is one of my favorite items, so.
So Emily, if you could, if I could ask you a question. Is this, so if we're talking about pots, pots of money, would this be like DOJ?
Yes.
I just.
Or at least justice, which I'm assuming is also to DOJ. But that section of it, yes.
Just looking at like the grants available from the DOJ website, I mean, there's, there's, I feel like there's just a lot more that we could be proactive with. Like I'm looking at one right now. It's improving substance use disorder treatment and recovery outcomes for adults in reentry. And I just feel like that would be more proactive ways of addressing this issue than, than a camera system. It's, it's very reactive and, and, you know, data would show that it actually doesn't prevent violent crime. It, it is pretty good, I guess, vandalism, the things that you were talking about, vandalism, things like that. But I just, I feel like there's a lot of proactive steps that we don't take. And I would like to see us move in a more proactive direction when we're trying to apply for these things. And, and, and just like I said, looking at the different things that the DOJ wants to fund, I feel like there are some categories here that I can see just from a little bit of looking that would, I would be happier with funding anyway.
These are due this week, though. If it's not on here now, it's not going to be on here.
Yeah.
Well, also too, consider, you know, what we're talking about is a particular kind of funding here now. These are the earmarks that the senators control. And certainly, I agree with you, the DOJ has numbers of other grants that we can and do pursue. It's one of the things that I'm very happy with that we've done, that we put in a grants writer who is very aware of what's going on. As long as we can give them an indication of the kind of grants that we want them to pursue, and I think we're doing that, you and I at least, then we should definitely make sure administration pursues those grants. In this particular instance, I, I think it'd be just foolish to not put in and go after what is available. This deadline for application is the 10th and the 12th. I mean, we don't have a lot of time to go playing around with this. And we're not going to get anything more by canceling one and saying we prefer the other, because we don't know if we're going to get either. What we need to do is just do the work, get it done, and go after these things in a more proactive and reasonable manner.
All right. You bet. Is there anyone else who's wishing to speak? And then we will, we will, we will vote.
And are we voting just on D?
Just on D. We're just going to keep it.
Before I vote.
Yes.
Because I'm up in the air here.
Okay.
What is the current timeline on the project or plan that we already have in place and are working on that has been delayed?
For the cameras?
Yes.
We have some of them up. There is, one of the cameras has the hardware and I think, so I think like about 10% of those have been installed.
When are you expecting the rest? Because I think the last we heard, we heard the viewers.
I believe after our last downtown safety committee meeting that I was not able to get in touch with the person who's running that project. They were on, in a meeting and then I did not get an opportunity to follow up, but I can definitely get more information on that. But we are going to be kind of reinitiating our street outreach coordinator position, kind of looking at social and mental health, which we're now, coincidentally, maybe kind of renaming as our police social worker. So it's working with the police department, but as a social worker background, maybe focus more on the mental health and substance use, kind of mental crisis response. So that's something that we're finalizing, that position to get released. So we, we had previously posted that and did not find an appropriate candidate and actually met with Dr. Dina Moro for, from the School of Social Work and with some of her class and reevaluated that, updated that work with the police department and are going to be kind of relaunching that. So if you know anyone that's in social work that wants to help.
During social work.
Will be in the market.
All right. I think if there's need to increase the network, that I would be in favor of increasing the network, even though the network has not been built out yet, but it's been ordered, because I think then it will take a while to order the next, the next set. And then we would have a full set. But that's my, my one person's opinion. So.
Mayor?
Yes.
Some of these questions can be answered if you go to the project management tool that we presented to City Council.
Uh huh.
If you, if you look under downtown surveillance cameras, it, it describes the project and our, our completion date was 3/1. Obviously, we're not going to hit that. But it does talk about, the cameras have been, been delivered, the two main pieces of the wireless network have been ordered and should be delivered through the end of February, through the first part of March. So that's, that's the update on that. We're, we're waiting for, for the software wireless network components to come in. And my understanding is they're supposed to be installed and up and running this spring.
I'm sorry, that was my question, because it says, you know, the end of February. Clearly, that was not the case.
And that's, that's, a lot of that's been out of our control, a lot of back ordering. If you've been ordering any materials online, it's, it's, it's really tough to get certain things. So, just for your information.
All right. Can we call the question? Oh, we need motions. Thank you very much.
I move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And then if a clerk will please call the roll. Yes. Bill Kowecki?
Yes.
Ixie Vega?
No.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
No.
Mayor Celine? Yes. So we have a split, so the motion fails, is that correct?
That's right.
All right. The motion fails. That will be removed from the requests. And now we're going to look at Item J, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing request for congressionally directed spending for the Morgantown rail trail lighting for crime prevention. So if you would please make a description.
Sure, sure. The city, over the last couple of years have, longer than that, have, we've recognized that the lighting along the rail trail, especially down the wharf area, is really difficult for, for the public to use because it's so dark. And, and many people have complained that it doesn't feel safe for them. And so we've made application many times. Last year, we made the same level of application to several pots of money and did not receive funding for it. We're, we're trying the discretionary spending this year in the, in the amount of $1 million for lighting along the trail. And we're hoping that this is that magic year where we can get the funding for that. We feel like it's a high priority also.
I would just like to add that sunny side up. I would just like to add that Sunny Side Up also spent some TIF dollars to design lighting on that portion of the trail. I think the university recognizes that they would like to see more lighting on the portion of the trail near their business building. I think there's just a lot of, we have the lighting, the example of lighting is the lighting down in front of the amphitheater. And I think most of this is designed around the same poles, if people are curious about that. And, yeah, this is a project that is, I think, Ella Belling and MRTC, they have a grant, but it's only for a portion, a portion of it, and it will take a long time to, for that to come to fruition. So the combination of grants, TIF dollars, any other kind of donations that we can find, the part that's already done by the amphitheater, this would be welcome and I think really important. People use that corridor for, for business and for recreation. So if somebody is staying at the waterfront hotel and they want to use restaurants that are along the river, so they want to go to Table Nine, or they want to come and have pizza or spaghetti, or if they want to come down the trail, it's very hard to pick your way along the boulevard and really the, the easiest route is along the rail trail and it's very, very dark, particularly between the hotel and all the restaurants. And so that's really a shame. And if you're walking down there and you're walking around the restaurants and it's more lit and you see people come out of the dark into that, their eyes are really big and they'll say, that was dark. So I think that it would really improve perceived safety and actual safety to have lighting.
Let me also add, this is one of those kinds of grants we used to apply for T-21 grants and other transportation enhancement grants. And it was always easier to get funding if you already had received funding.
Yes.
And so what, one of the things we're hoping here is that if we can land a, a grant such as this, we can always go back and say, it was important for you to allocate a million dollars. We have these, these additional needs. This is, this is only going to take care of a small percentage of the problem.
Yeah.
So we're hoping it's going to be pave the way for, for future funding for these types of activities.
Great.
Well, it'd be really great for us to go to DC and say, you know, our rail trail already got some money.
No problem on that.
This is a collaborative project.
Yes.
My husband and I had dinner at Olivario's over the weekend and every time, we were on the back deck and every time someone popped out from the rail trail, it was.
Yeah.
It's very dark and you can't see any, anything.
No. And some people use that to commute as well. So.
Who else has questions?
Move to approve?
Sounds good. Clerk, if you would please call the roll. If there are no other questions. Okay. Yes, Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Iksia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, passes unanimously. Now we're going on down to new business. Consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual budget of the City of Morgantown, as shown in the revised budget attached here too, and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the general fund. And if you and your finance team.
We need more detail. We have our finance director. Let me just state that from time to time, budgets are meant to, are meant to be flexible. And certainly we don't know at the beginning of these fiscal year exactly what the spending is going to actually be in each department. And from time to time, we, we experience these revisions to, to the general fund budget in order to accommodate changes or changes in needs. And so what, what these changes represent is a total of $68,790 in department by department changes that have been requested. It, the, the funding for that $68,790 will come out of the, the general fund contingency and will reduce it to $1,431,210. So we have our finance director. If you have any specific questions about the items that we're requesting be, be adjusted, that would be great.
Hello, oh, finance director.
Thank you, sir.
Does anyone have any questions or do you have any comments of things that you would like us to know?
I can provide details.
Why don't you provide details?
Certainly can.
I know you can do questions.
The revision includes $28,790 to municipal court. The reason being, the court judge was switched from an employee to contract effective January 1st. That required a payout of his accrued vacation and PTO time, which was a rather significant amount. So that's causing the salary line, taxes, pension. It, it will be over budget by the end of the year, plus his new contract. So I am suggesting adding $28,790 to municipal court. Also suggesting $20,000 to the elections department. There is a required mailing due to change in voting location that will have to go out that was unplanned. And also additional cost of the voting machines, that went up pretty significantly. And then $5,000 to city garage and $15,000 to fire department. Both of those relate to repairs to the trucks and vehicles for the fire department. We've seen an increase in, in repairs and the cost to the repairs. And both of those line items are at 97% right now with still four months to go. So need a little extra money in, in those repairs. And then as city manager stated, we will be taking the, the total of $68,790 out of contingency for these amounts.
Thank you for the great description. Do we have any other, any questions? Not other questions, questions to start with? You gave such a good description that there are zero questions. Is there someone willing to make a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. And unless there's any, unless anyone has anything to say, please call the roll. Yes. Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Iksia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Appreciate the prudence that allows us to have some contingency that we can fill in those gaps. So that passes unanimously. And now we're on to consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Morgantown for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. City manager.
Hi, if, if it please counsel, we've, we've certainly talked this, you've had several reports on this. I, I think our finance director is prepared to address any questions you have or anything you want to add to.
Yeah. Well, first apologize for presenting a revision and a new budget all in the same evening. We normally try to avoid that, but with the election coming up, we had to get that revision in there. But this is a ordinance, first reading for the proposed budget for the general fund and coal severance fund only. Some of the other funds, Capital Escrow, Sales Tax, Arts and Culture Airport, will be at a later date through resolution. So this is general fund and coal severance only. And this is through ordinance, which is required by the state auditor's office. Proposing a $43 million, a little over $43 million general fund budget and $120,500 for coal severance. Did receive the certificate of valuation today from the county, so we can now update the property tax numbers and get those finalized. And we'll have those to you for the second reading on the 21st. Other than that, with my presentation at the committee as a whole and the individual meetings that we've had over the last couple of weeks, I don't have anything else, but we'll try to answer questions if anybody has any.
We could also add that the items that are in the Manila folder are for the next meeting.
Correct, yes.
So that, just so that everyone has those for the next meeting.
Yes.
I think most people knew that, but it's good to just have that out there.
Yeah.
Is there any questions about this?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank you and the finance team for having those additional meetings for us to sit down and have our questions answered in more detail.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate that.
I guess I wanted to say I got to sit in and hear some of the questions that all of you asked. And I love the way that each person looks at a budget differently and has different experiences with either budgets or the items that happen to be within this budget and asks different questions. So it really sharpens everything up to have people thinking through how the budget fits together. And your ability to answer the questions. So.
Yeah, definitely would like to have those meetings again next year, maybe even two to three.
Yeah.
We started out with one, it turned into two, but to accommodate everybody with two to three, I think would be great.
And I really appreciate you being able to answer our questions and especially make that time for us. If, I feel like we should, I guess, state that if the public has questions on the budget, I would encourage you to reach out to your city counselor and we can try to get those questions answered for you. Because I know we're not like going in depth on the budget here, but we have all individually done so. And so if you have questions, reach out to one of us and we'll, we'll do our best to make sure we get that answered for you.
All right. How about a motion? Do we already do a motion? No.
Move to approve the budget as presented?
Second. Thank you. And then if the clerk would please call the roll. Yes, Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Iksia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. Consideration of approval to submit a letter of intent to participate in the 30 by 30 pledge to increase the recruitment, retention, and promotion of women in policing. And we have an officer here that we would like to speak to. I didn't know if you all wanted to manager or assistant manager give a little spiel first, but then, then we'd like to hear from our, our force.
If, if it please counsel, I'd, I'd ask our deputy city manager who's been working diligently on this to, to give a report on it.
Okay.
Absolutely. So Chief Powell and Deputy Chief Scott and I have been meeting with everyone, kind of that we can think of to discuss opportunities for increasing our recruitment and kind of fighting against these national issues that people are having with shortages. And so this was something that we talked about, the 30 by 30 pledge talks about, it's a pledge to focus on bringing more women into the police force. And so I believe we have five or six women currently on our police force, which is about 8% of our officers. And so this is to get up to 30% of women in new recruit classes. And so I just thought who better to speak to this than some of our esteemed law enforcement officers themselves.
That would mean you're on.
Yes, this is Lieutenant Molly Lenthem. She's been with the department for, not quite as long as me, but a pretty long time. So, and she may want to talk, she may not want to, but I just wanted to kind of share with you the thought process and what this is about. This program's been around for, for a little while. And our department, by making this pledge, is joining a growing number of departments throughout the country. It was started originally by a professor at the New York University Law School and a former chief of police of the Newark, New Jersey Police Department. And basically what it does is it provides guidance through studies, through policy, from anything from policy all the way up to specific strategies and recruitment to increase both the applicant pool as far as females go into the police profession and also with the ultimate goal of reaching that 30% threshold within a 30-year period of having that percentage of police officers within our department being represented by female officers. I think it's a worthy and worthwhile endeavor because, I mean, I, I think any department that isn't seeking to diversify what, what they've got already and make it better and make it more representative of the population it serves is doing itself a disservice. And I, I think we've struggled as a department in the past and even though we have maintained some level of a female presence within our ranks, we certainly, certainly can do a lot better. And it's, it's just one of those things that we can do. It's not a difficult thing to do. And it's something that we can do to improve us as, as a whole and as a department and provide a better service to the community and be more representative of the community that we serve. I'll try to answer any questions and I don't know if Molly wants to answer any questions.
She'll try.
She can try. So it, it, it's a really simple thing. It doesn't require any investment in any way. It's sort, it's simply taking the suggestions they have with respect to recruitment strategies and policy implementation and policy changes and putting them into effect to sort of encourage this, this goal, you know, the ability to achieve the goal that we're, we're seeking. That's it.
So we have a Lieutenant Molly question. You pronounce your last name, Lenthem?
Lenthum.
Lenthum, all right. So Lieutenant Molly Lenthum. How, do you have any, like, why would you encourage women to join the force? What, what, what about it appealed to you and then now that you've been in, in our police force for a little while?
Yeah, almost 18 years, actually.
Almost 18 years. Yes. You look very familiar, we'll put it that way.
Yeah. Been around for a while. I actually worked at WVUPD before I started at Morgantown, but.
Yes.
The biggest thing for me is women give a different perspective to law enforcement like we do with life anyway. We seem to be more empathetic. I'm not saying the men aren't, but we just kind of give a different perspective to it. I've always tried to recruit women as much as possible. I love my job, I always have. I've been on the recruiting trail since I started here. So I just kind of slacked off of that with getting promoted and everything. There's a lot more responsibilities, but I've always supported any women that have come into our department and we do have some pretty strong women that work for us, so that's pretty much about it.
Well, as we work through this, if either of you and the entire force, if you have suggestions for policy.
Yeah, definitely. Well, and that's the thing is I was reading through some of it.
Yes.
That Emily had mentioned is, you know, there are some things that are mentioned in there that a lot of departments I know that are male-heavy have never thought about with this. Like we've had a lot of females that have had children and we've made those accommodations. And we don't have an issue with that within our department. We're not like the larger departments where they've never had that circumstance. So we've never really had too much of that issue. So we're onto our second female that has had a kid. So it's, we accommodate whatever they need. And I don't think we've ever really had too much of an issue. If something else would come up, we would absolutely change policy if necessary.
Good. Well, maybe every year or two we could talk about this again so we keep it, keep it in the front of the mind.
Yep. Any other questions?
Anybody have any questions? Well, thank you all for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there a motion for this?
Of course.
Thank you.
Move this forward.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. And if there are no more questions, we will have the clerk call the roll.
Yes, Bill Kueckie?
Yes, certainly.
Ixie Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Good job.
Eric tried to escape, but Chip called him back.
City managers report.
I made him stay. Before we talk about law enforcement, I wanted to recognize a couple of our key administrative staff who provide great services to the city. About eight months ago, we restructured our code enforcement department. And we made application for, there were applications open for the chief building inspector position that runs that department. Mr. Drew Cantus, who had been an employee of the city for a number of years, was hired in that position provisionally pending his receiving a very difficult certification, the Certified Building Official Certification. And after a lot of hard work just this week, or late last week, it was, he received notification that he received his Certified Building Official Certification from the International Code Council. Great achievement in what it allows him to do now. He's not provisional anymore. He can work fully and with full authority. So that is, if you see Mr. Cantus, you want to really congratulate him. The other is Carrie Nestor, who works in the Human Resources Department and provides tremendous support for our Human Resources Director. Also made application, took extensive coursework, and one of the most difficult certifications to receive. She also, at the same time, received notification that she was, she received the designation as professional human resources, professional. And that is, I believe, is the top designation in that field. So if you see Carrie also mentioned to her, you know, I'm just, I'm thrilled when we have employees that give that kind of effort and are rewarded for their efforts, being able to better themselves and at the same time improve the city's standing. So thanks to both of those for their efforts. The last thing that I have, I felt it'd be better coming from the chief's mouth, so to speak. We've been, there have been concerns over the last number of months about law enforcement presence in the downtown. You know, you all know that we've had difficulties in staffing, and that's created some bottlenecks in terms of what we've been able to do. I believe that Chief Powell and his staff have really done the best they can with a very difficult situation. However, and we're waiting for, isn't, seven recruits to come out of the academy, right? And that will help take some of the load off. Plus, we have somewhere around 30, how many now? 28. 28 applicants for this next round that are coming up for, we're hoping that we can generate a number of individuals out of that. So things are looking up. But what I want to do is maybe if it's okay with counsel, give some of my time as an update to the Chief, Chief Powell, to talk just a little bit about strategies for law enforcement coverage in our downtown. Because that's always the topic of conversation, right? Is that, if it's okay?
Yeah, so born out of that, the concerns that I was hearing, just anecdotally as well as directly about people's experiences in the downtown area. I was kind of, we were trying to come up with some solutions as how we could address sort of our presence, the presence issue there, because I, you know, I know that it's a problem. So what we did was, back on the third, was, you know, I gave out a memo sent out to Molly, Lieutenant Lenthcom and Lieutenant Ammons on our day shift, because Molly's on our afternoon shift supervisor. Just basically, and what it was, the title of the memo was Directed Foot Patrol. So I basically gave direction to them to, and I created a schedule that started at 9:00 AM and ended at 9:00 PM. And it basically required one officer to use that time, designated time slot, solely dedicated to doing a foot patrol in the downtown area. And during that time, they're being directed to also make at least two contacts of business owners in the area, document those, and bring them back to us. And also, you know, find out if there are any concerns from those business owners and give any feedback that they're receiving, and we would take note of it on the thing. And I'm pretty happy to say that we've been able to fill most of the time slots. There have been a couple of times where officers have started and been called away to other calls that have a little greater priority, such as motor vehicle accidents or something like that. But for the most part, most of the times, I'd say about, I think at this point, we're up to about 55 to 60. Foot patrol has been conducted in the downtown area anywhere between 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM with at least two contacts being made on every occasion. I also made sure that the routes that were being used by the individual officers weren't being repeated excessively. So they had to say where they went. And with the knowledge that the supervisor had, the next person that goes out would, you know, they would be directed, you know, try to avoid doing this again and try to go somewhere else. So, and that's worked out pretty good the way it was. You know, I struggled with this because it's a difficult thing to pull a guy off. I know just from a supervisory standpoint, from first-level supervision, that it's kind of hard to pull someone off of a sign zone and say, you're going to be doing something else for a couple of reasons. But because of the situation, I think it kind of warranted just the kind of level of anxiety that people were having about it. And I think it's working out really well. I mean, I think it's kind of a, it's obviously not a permanent way to address the problem, but at this point, it's the most effective way with what we have. That's all I got.
I think it's been great, Eric, is one person who gets a lot of complaints and concerns, and I tend to air those a little more publicly than some, probably. But I will also be the first to say that I've heard from three constituents and a business owner in the last about 36 hours saying how much they appreciated that. And I was like, I didn't really even know. So that's, it's already, and I saw the downtown officer as I was driving down here this evening, so.
Yeah, so, you know, at this point, where in the past we might have had a dedicated individual, which is still important to have. I mean, and once I get my special services unit up to staff, that will be the case again. They will be assuming that role. Because it's important to have that continuity with business owners and that sort of familiarity that people have for that specific environment. So that's going to happen again. It's just going to, but at the same time, it's a really good experience for officers that might not be inclined to have done it in the past to get to know, you know, various business owners in the downtown area in general. So it's actually, it's got a lot of upside to it.
I'm going to raise my hand on myself. I really appreciate you all working through this because I know it was hard to figure out how to spread thinner what was already thin. So, and so if you would, from all of us, thank officers for being flexible.
I sure will.
And probably it is a good exercise in precedent to have officers be flexible when the situation merits it. And get out and walk a little. So I would appreciate them doing that.
I'll let them know, you said that.
Yes, thank you.
They'll appreciate it. Okay. You sure I can get it?
Wait a minute. All right.
That's all I have, thank you.
Wonderful. And our hard-working clerk?
Okay, Mayor. We were having an election on April 25th. Most of you know. But of those folks who turned in signatures and filed a certificate of candidacy, that all of their signatures have been verified. So as of right now, we have, for the First Ward, Joe Bugonham and James Giuliani; Third Ward, Louise Wheezy Michael; Fifth Ward, Danielle Trumbull and Marley Uneges; and Seventh Ward, Brian Butcher and Ben Mail. So I just want to share that. This information is on our website if folks do have questions about who will be running. We still have a little bit of time for write-ins to file, and that deadline is April 11th. So a few more folks could be involved in our election as well. So I'm going to share real quick some upcoming deadlines or dates that are important. Early voting is coming up, April 12th through the 22nd. This is a change, there's only one early voting location. And so as Director Tenet shared earlier during his explanation of our budget increase for the elections, by state code, we are required to notify every registered voter of any polling place changes. So because we moved our early voting from the places that we had last time to the depot, then they will be notified of that by mail. So folks can look for that in their mail in the coming weeks. April 4th is the last day to register to vote, and we will be holding a drive-through registration day for the city of Morgantown, and we'll be doing that under the farmer's market like we did last time. And we recommend folks, if they would like to, they could drive by under the farmer's market, and we'll be there to help them register to vote. And then we will send their registrations over to our county clerk, Carrie Blaney. Polling places, I want to share a little bit about polling places. So I've shared the last several weeks about election flyers that have gone out into the MUB invoices. The second set of flyers should be going out this week to all residents who have serviced through MUB. And if you receive an electronic bill, then they should be sending you an email. Thank you, Counselor Kueckie, for bringing over the first flyer and showing me how nice they look. So I'm hoping that the word is getting out. But the second flyer does have all of the polling places listed, and there are a significant amount of changes this year. So I think that's one thing that we, if you could help me share when you're having conversations with folks, to share, to either reach out to the city clerk's office, and we can look their precinct up and let them know where they need to vote this year, or send them to our website, we'll be glad to help them. And if I could, real quick, go through those polling places just so folks will know.
Please.
Precinct 1, and I'm saying precinct in lieu of ward because that's how we have our polling places. Precinct 1, last year was at the South Side Fire Station, and this year it, they will be at the Mountaineer Mall. And on our website, each polling place is listed. There's a link that takes the voter, gives them directions to that place. And there's also a photo, which is really nice. Our communications director, his staff posted a photo of exactly where that entrance is, where folks are to enter. So I think that's going to be a handy tool. So Precinct 1 is at the, out the Mountaineer Mall. Precinct 2A and 2B, they were at Morgantown High last year, and that, there's no change there. Precinct 10 was at the Bow Park Senior Center, and this year they will be at the First Presbyterian Church. Precinct 13 was at the First Presbyterian Church last year, or in 21, and this year they will be at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. 16, there's no change, and they will be voting at the Bow Park Senior Center. Precinct 23 was at Suncrest United Methodist Church, and they will be voting at Research Ridge Business Park out by the school, Suncrest Elementary. Precinct 30, no change from last year. They will be voting at Saberton Hill Baptist Church. And then our new precinct, which is Precinct 31, this is our first election with Precinct 31, and they will be voting also at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. I think that's it for elections. Lastly, as Chief Powell alluded to and our city manager about our police civil service commission, they will be holding the entry-level police officer exams this Saturday. And we do have 28 applicants, and I believe that three of them are female. So we typically do have at least one. And so anyway, just want to share that. The deadline for applying is up for this Saturday's test, but we will be holding a test again in June. That date has not been set as of yet, but we will, we're not, we will continue to receive applications at any time. We'll just push those, any additional folks who may apply after this week to the June test. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Is 28 more than we've been getting for tests applicants?
Seems like it.
Off the top of my head, I can't answer that, but it's been around there. Give or take.
So it's not extraordinarily high this time?
No.
Okay.
Mayor? The polling places online, and I'm calling up polling places that I'm seeing 2017 and 2019, but I'm not seeing anything telling me about 2023.
Can you tell me how you, did you go to the search?
I went to the search section.
And you typed in polling places, and that's what?
That's what came up.
Well, I apologize for that. I will ask the communications folks if they can somehow turn that off, those old places. I'm not sure. But if you do go to the search field and type in elections, it will take you to our election page, and then they will be there on our election page. I'm not sure why the old ones are still popping up.
Okay.
Yeah, if you go to the election page and click on voter information, it lists the correct ones. So he just needs to hide those old pages, I guess.
Yeah.
Good research. All right. Is there anything else? Thank you. Report from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We have conducted an additional board member orientation and training since your last meeting and have another scheduled. Those are something that Christine sets up regularly along with our communications department to provide an introduction to all our new board and commission members who have volunteered to serve and give them an overview of the city's policies that they'll work with and the laws that they'll follow in their new public service roles. We're continuing to work on documents necessary for city infrastructure projects, including the Campus Drive relocation, First Street relocation, and Walnut Street, Streetscape projects that are all expected to begin this summer. It's nice to see Byke Ahos here this evening talking about all the pedestrian and bike safety projects she works on there. A great help to the city along with A great help to the city along with many of the, the trail projects that she has initiated and supported us with. I know that she's been in contact with me as well as other city staff in the engineering department about the initiatives she's discussed in collaborating with DOH on improving safety on state routes and opportunities to either partner through local service agreements or to pursue through home rule or other legislation, ways that we can improve those routes. So it's really great to hear her, her additional work on those efforts. As you all know, the legislative session is coming to a close soon. A lot of legislation has been completed and some affecting municipalities, although it's still awaiting governor's signature. It's a bill amending the Tax Increment Financing Act that will allow cities or counties with districts that have outstanding bonds as of 2020 to extend the life of those districts for an additional 15 years. That can allow areas with, with TIF districts to potentially pursue additional financings and projects in those districts or simply take advantage of an opportunity to restructure their debt and, and be more flexible with their project plans. There's also completed legislation on electric bicycles that will make our state definitions more consistent with federal law. Provides for use of a throttle on class two e-bicycles, which are those that are pedal assist up to 20 miles per hour. And makes some provisions for how those vehicles are treated when operating on roads and paths that are also used by bicycles. As always, if you all have questions about that legislation or others that's, that's making its way through the legislature, we'd be happy to follow up on this. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you for keeping track. There's a lot going on down there. Does anyone have any questions? All right. We will start with Counselor Quecki, if he is willing.
Yeah, sure. Let's start with something that's concerned for my neighborhood. I've been getting complaints about trash pickup starting at four, 4:15, 5 o'clock in the morning. Is that something that is written into our new contract? That they can start that early? Do we have a specific start time? What's involved here?
Counselor, that is unchanged by our new contract. The existing provision that prohibits any collection in residential areas before 6:00 AM remains in place. It is a violation of the contract terms to collect before that time.
And then how should I advise my complaints? In other words, what do I need to tell the people who are complaining to me about this time?
I think that's something that we should coordinate with the city manager's office and get in touch with Republic directly. There are penalty provisions under the contract for violations like that. And also obviously some, some contacts that the city works closely with at Republic who can make sure those issues are corrected going forward.
Do I have them call? Or do I have them report this through 311? Do I have them call Carol? Do I have them call the city manager? Do I have them call Republic?
I think that they should. The, the most direct option right now, I believe, is to call Carol Allen, who usually handles those and can triage them at the city level. Those should be reported to Republic through their forthcoming website. That is under the new contract terms, but I don't believe that's operational yet.
Thank you. Let me continue on. I debated whether or not to do this, but I will. And I see that I've lost, I've lost the newspaper anyway, so perhaps that's better. I can't tell you how disappointed I am with tonight's council and the action you took on those cameras downtown. What you did is denied a possibility that sometime in the future we'll look to do, that will not necessarily present itself in the same manner or with the same kind of possibility that we have now. And you did it without ensuring any consequence for anything better or anything other than just simply to deny the possibility of getting better coverage and better security for our downtown. I do understand your approach. I don't understand your rationale. And I am very disappointed in the fact that this is the action we took. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Counselor Vega?
I don't have too much to report. I've been working a lot through session, so my life has been consumed with everything that's been going down in Charleston right now. But it is International Women's Month. And tomorrow at 7:00 PM at 123 Pleasant Street, there's going to be an event to benefit the RDVIC, the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center that serves Taylor County, Montegalia County, and Preston County. There will be musicians, poetry, and a good time. So I recommend that folks go over there. And I also want to give a shout out to the women that work in our city staff. Y'all do it all and we appreciate you. Speaking of the RDVIC again, there will be a Walk for Survivors on April 1st. This is one of the ways that the RDVIC, RDVIC is able to provide all of the services that they do for free. So if you are able to go and participate and donate your time and your money, I think that would be very beneficial to the group and for our community. And like our city attorney mentioned, legislative session ends on Saturday at midnight. And I want to flag that there is a end child marriage bill that several community members in Morgantown have been working on to pass. It's passed the House, but hasn't made it to the Senate agenda. So I urge you all to reach out to your representative and to your senator and ask them to push it through. Regardless of your political affiliation, children should not be married as children. That will conclude my report.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I think most of the things I was going to talk about, we've already hit upon in others. So I will just bring up that there is a new cafe at the Wilds Hill Community Center that has been very well received by the community in general. I had the privilege of going there and having some coffee and pastry and conversations last week. And I also attended a closing at the art gallery some night over the weekend. And it's my understanding that a new art show hosted, or an Eddie Spaghetti art show will be opening this Friday at 6:00 PM. And the cafe will be open during that time. They'll be providing some food and drinks. And I believe Fifth Ward's own Chris Haddix will be playing to entertain the crowd. So I hope people will stop by and check that out. And I don't appreciate a personal attack based on a vote because I have voted against the majority of this body many times. Sometimes I'm on the winning side, sometime I'm on the losing side. But I don't believe I have ever personally come at another counselor for the way that they voted. I am very disappointed, for example, with the defense in depth vote. But I lost that and we moved on. And here we are. And I think it's inappropriate to bring it up in this manner. So I hope we can have a little more decorum moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschberg?
Thank you. Just a reminder that the next MUB meeting that I represent on city, as city council representative is next Tuesday. There are a number of issues that we're still working through with White Park, as an example. And would like to just continue to be a voice representing our thoughts in those meetings. So if you have things that you would like me to say, present, et cetera, please let me know. And as well as, you know, Ryan, Ryan Savington, you know, to this city attorney, if there are things that I can be helpful with and bring forward in those meetings, please, please share. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Butcher?
Thank you. I was able to attend a DEI event for WVU Medicine as a, as a guest of my wife's. But Charlie Marshall was there and she spoke, which was, it was interesting to hear her perspective and talking about all the challenges she had to face when she was a mayor. And it was, it was just a very unique perspective to hear about and to talk to her. And she's a wonderful person as well. So it was, it was great to see her there. And, and she talked a lot about some of the kind of institutional discrimination she faced when she was a mayor and, and both being a woman and being black and, and how difficult that was for her. But it was also cool to hear about just the kind of ways that they covered back then too. But yeah, so that, that was a great event. And then on the second, I spent most of the day at the warming shelter, just talking with folks, figuring out what their plans were for transition out of the warming shelter, helping them formulate those plans, mostly tracking down vouchers for people and applying people for vouchers for apartments. And then later that night, I went to a know your rights training at First Presbyterian. That was well-attended, appreciated hearing from the speakers there. And Charlie Marshall was there and, and a lot of the other community members that were able to attend. And I think that was a good, a good and productive piece of community education that the First Presbyterian Church helped there, along with NAACP. And then I too went to the Wilds Hill Community Center on the fourth. And that's a really cool space. To be in there, it's, and you know, I was there to see Jenny Wilson's exhibit there because she was auctioning off a painting for Ramp. And to be in there, like, made me think like every neighborhood should have something like this. And it's really cool to see what was done with it, especially with the respect to history that that place has. In the back for people who haven't been there, there's like kind of a, almost a museum exhibit that talks all about what it, what the school meant to the neighborhood over the years. And, and there's like real pictures from back then, real testimony from people who had been at the school. And that's really neat to see. And again, like highlights our character in the neighborhood and stuff like that. And it was just, they, we did a wonderful job with that place and it's, it's really cool to see. I guess I would just close out my comments with just, unfortunately, for several weeks now, I've kind of been inundated with messages, phone calls, both text messages, phone calls, Facebook messages that are really aggressive and very harassing. And are stating things about our homeless population that are really disturbing. There's people in this community that believe that the homeless population is being armed to fight against the non-homeless population. The kind of narrative that this is being pushed in our community is frankly dangerous, extremely. Because someone who's unsheltered is eventually going to get hurt by this kind of narrative. You know, I'm a public official, so if you want to harass me, that's, it is what it is. That's what I signed up for. But the kind of vitriol, hatred, lies, especially the lies that are out there about our unsheltered population, the volunteers that are helping our unsheltered population, the warming shelter, Bartlett House, Health Right. I've talked to all those service providers and you're, you think you might be helping by highlighting issues, as you might call it. Every one of those service providers is having an incredibly difficult time right now because of this. There are formal complaints lodged at Bartlett. There's, there's, every one of them is spending more time dealing with this in the community and this kind of narrative that's out there than they are helping people. And it's got to stop. That'll be the end of my comments. Thank you.
Wow, there's a lot going on. And, and I agree with the, lots of weird negative comments online that are very repetitive and non-productive. So if you see something that's not productive, feel free to say. I've seen that a few other times. Can we move on to some other topic? Or I really appreciated a whole series of comments that happened yesterday where, try to ignore these things and usually I do, but it had been getting repetitive. And it got to a point where even I think the people who agreed with the person who was writing negative comments started saying, okay, I've agreed with you, but I've had enough. So if people could be productive, there's a lot of interesting things going on. There's the city's having a branding exercise. And we have tried to do this in the past a few times. And we never quite hit it just right. And I think this might be a time when we will. And so I think that when the city or someone sincerely puts themselves out there and says that they're working on a project, if you don't have something nice to say, maybe people could just quietly go do something else. Because the enthusiasm of people who are working hard in our city and in our neighborhoods is very important in our community. And as Counselor Butcher referred to, some of our social service people are getting really tired. There's no reason for that. So we need to figure out how to work together, who was spoken about earlier, and sort out our differences and keep working. Because that's the only way that you get a good community. It's part of why I like that Yurik Cafe up at Wilds Hill is there were people of all ages. I was up there, I think on Thursday and on Friday. There were people there of all ages. There were people having conversations. There were people that were, looked like they were working or at least pretending to work. They were people looking at the history. Wilds Hill, some of those photographs include maypole, maypole photographs of people in spring, dancing around in maypole, which not every neighborhood, I think, did that as much as Wilds Hill. I think the last few years, the school was open. They were still, they were still using the maypole, which I think I hadn't seen, I hadn't seen it anywhere in a long time. And so anyway, there's photographs up there of that and.
The pole's still there in the corner.
Oh, good. Maybe we can put it to good use. But it, it just is a very neighborhood feeling place. And trying to remember Alice's last name. I think it's Alice Willis or something like that. One of the neighbors at Wilds Hill, I was in her house once or twice. But she would talk about the learning in the walls that just sort of came from the generations past and just kind of seeped into, seeped into the children, which I thought was really a neat, neat thought. So I just, I recommend going up there because the food tastes good, but also because the atmosphere is fabulous. And there's a art gallery right across the way. And they're working on, I think they're working on doubling their programming over the next months or years. So it's definitely worth checking out what's going on at the Wilds Hill Community Center. And it's also where you sign up for swimming lessons and summer programming. I wanted to mention the efforts that the city is putting into. You heard a little bit about policing, but I also wanted to make note of how our city workers are working with each other and really focusing on the downtown. So I can start off with police, but you can also look at the efforts at picking up and cleaning up the public works, code enforcement, making sure that everything is up to code. making sure that everything is up to code and looking specifically at parts of code that will improve the um cleanliness, um safety. They were talking about um rodent prevention, not a really uh sexy area, but there it is. And also they were working with um planning and MUB and engineering on looking at what the issues are and um and how they can specifically be solved. Like looking for an open pipe or looking for areas that need um specific treatment. So I just really appreciate um the efforts and I think that they're noticeable. And um I think you kind of have in a city some unsung heroes that are um looking after the day-to-day. So uh and, and really analyzing how to make things better and I appreciate it. That's the end of my comments. So I would say that adjournment is in order.
Move to adjourn?
Second. Thank you.